...of the Art Commission July 7th, 2022, 7:15.
All right. Yes. But I didn't bring my sheet with me, so everyone's here, so. I'll add that to the record. Everyone's here. Is everyone here? Before we start, I wanted to offer two options for you to facilitate this. One option is to self-facilitate where you guys manage this, or we can facilitate through a program that I was trained on to do project management on this element. It's called Scrum Training. They usually use it for tech, but we found that it can be used for multiple areas. We use it in tourism a lot, especially like if we're doing big projects like a travel planner and we get everyone's feedback. And so it's up to you on how you want to do this. I'm offering that option. And then you, or you can just run it as a group. No, we're in a work session. Okay, so one key. Yeah, so in front of you are notepads with sticky notes on them. And what we do is we offer a question. People respond to it on the notepad. So let's say, for example, what kind of project would you like to do? And then everyone writes down three options based on those instructions. We put them up on the board. We look for commonality in those options. And then, once we have some sense of commonality or some ideas that have never been expressed in the group before, this gives everyone an opportunity to express that clearly. Then the next stage is, because our goal here is not to get into the meat and potatoes of a project. It's just to try to decide what project we're going to do based on the funds that we have available. And so then, after we've decided what projects that we feel like are really the most popular on the board type of thing, then what we do is then take the funding levels and we assign dollar values to those. And then that helps us distribute out how those dollars go. So that by the time you're done with the session, you will have a kind of an idea of, so however many projects, based on how much dollars we have available. The idea is to also, during that, is what we call phased conversation. And so when we have what we call an open floor, during those phased conversations, anyone can say, okay, I'd like to have a conversation or make a comment or describe a program that they were. Someone might say, I don't understand what that program is. Then they have a chance to explain what that program is within a certain timeline. We only have two hours, so it's really important that we utilize the time efficiently. And usually, we can do a complete, like, let's say we want to design a website. We can do a complete design in a two-hour period if you do it structurally, so.
I like that idea because I think it gives everybody a voice. One thing that I've been concerned about in the meetings is that I wish I had made sure that everybody has a voice on everything we talk about. I think it would be a nice way to do it very organized, so I'm all for that. And if we could, I mean, I don't know how you think, what you're thinking of how to begin, but if we could partition off into, you know, what the items are on the recommendations and then do that. What are our number one, two, three, four? What do you want to do? And then with your name, stick it up under those four recommendations and see what we have the most. Is that your idea, Dan?
That's the general concept. It's a little bit more broader than that because you don't usually silo the original ideas initially because, sure, we have some recommendations, but the reality is, is that a lot of people have recommendations that have been thinking about it since the last meeting, and this gives them an opportunity to express that.
I'm sorry. I just feel like I've been coming to these meetings for months. It's like half the meetings get facilitated by the city. I mean, I don't even know like what we're doing on the Arts Commission if we're not like running our own meetings and deciding how to do the process. I've been to so many of these meetings where like, you know, I spend half the meeting like listening to the city tell us what to do. And I just, I'm just, I'm getting kind of frustrated.
I know. I could hear it in your voice, and I understand that.
A work session where we were going to decide as a group what to do. And it's like, it's already started right away by like city officials telling us what to do. And I'm just kind of like.
Yeah, I think that we do need, though, an organized way in order to be able to put that up. And I do like that idea. Think if we start going around the room of what do you want to do? What's your, it gets lost in the conversation instead of being able to visually see it. This is what one, two, three, four is. And then, as we take a look at, oh, everybody wants to do this. And then, like Dan said, start to discuss it, just so that everybody has a voice and everybody is able, in an organized way. That's what I'm a little nervous about in our other meetings, is that we get into a conversation and everybody has a wonderful voice. Not everybody is heard, but we don't get to the point where we can make a, you know, intelligent decision of what. So are you comfortable with that?
Hello? Can the people online hear me? Is this one working? I don't know if that one's working either.
I think it is.
Is it? Mary, you said you had a presentation on something. Is it related to the budget and what we're talking about right now? Would it make sense for us to start with your presentation? Can we do that? Because if Mary put a lot of thought and effort into doing a presentation for us, I think it would be, it makes sense to do that. I also put some thought into this conversation ahead of time and did a handout. And I think reviewing those things to begin with and then moving forward would be. Is that, is that okay? I just want to make sure that she put the effort.
Absolutely, and I didn't even see, this did not get onto the agenda for Mary's presentation because I'm excited that you put a presentation together. I'm like, great.
But I definitely agree that we should make a point that everybody in the room takes, get the moment.
Has a voice.
Yes.
But I do. I'm changing my mind. Let's do that. Let's proceed with Commissioner Andrews to do your presentation and then your handout. And then maybe at that point, we'll be able to go around the room and put our, because I've done a little bit of research too on my wish list, so.
Emma, is that okay with you?
Well, it's not to me, but that sounds great.
I just want to.
Thank you for checking in.
Okay.
I want you to be comfortable. I appreciate your voice. I want to say that too.
So, um, can you hear me? Maybe? Yes, okay, great. All right, so I'm going to share my screen. I need to get the thing up. Hold on one second. And Jen, can you see that? Okay.
You're on mute, Jen.
Good. You can see it? You wrote something in the chat?
I never use my phone for Zoom, so I'm stumbling my way through.
Okay, we can hear you now. Okay, so this is just an idea. It's just. Okay, good. This is just an idea. It's a sketch. It's like a point for us to start the conversation. I don't know if any of you have, were aware of the cow zone parade that was in Chicago. I lived in Chicago for 17 years. And this was a really engaging exhibition of these sculptures that were all over the cities, especially on Michigan Avenue. And each cow was a fiberglass structure, and it was hand painted and embellished by various artists and community groups. And some even really famous artists worked on some of the cows. The same kind of thing happened in New York City, which takes us to this little clip. Hold on one second. It's loading. It's loading right here.
It just makes it more exciting. It's a cliffhanger.
The anticipation.
It's gonna be amazing. It's got horns.
Try and play it. Of course, there's no sound.
Cow alive in the weather of New York City this summer. That's Billy the Art working on a piece.
Okay. Maybe that's not.
Calls. Who? Your summer celebration. People celebrating, the vibrant colors, people being out. Kind of the celebration of where New York is going to be this summer. Everybody coming back out. Billy is one of 75 artists and designers who are using a 100-pound fiberglass cow as a canvas. As the cow parade returns to New York City for the first time since 2000, the cow sculptures will be placed in so-called pastries around the five boroughs from August 18th through September 30th. It's the world's largest public art event. The cows work in great days for the harvest program. They have to be cows that are swayed and will be watching God. And that in God's love we deliver. The 36-year-old organization which cooks and delivers medically tailored meals to New Yorkers with likable re illnesses. Over 6,000 new clients since the pandemic began.
For people needing their home, they're haunted, they're scared to go out.
As you would imagine, this is the first cow for a house of New York. Big canvas for sure.
Another abstract painter, so they found something very three-dimensional, very real. It's fun. I feel like I would like to decorate for others.
Wow. Artist and graphic designer say, I hope that's actually many of his friends from the graffiti and street art world to be part of the project. He's a longtime supporter of God's love.
I've never painted a cow, and I remember this campaign from 20 years ago. And I just thought it would be a lot of fun, and here I am, raising an industry city.
Another well-known artist, Peter Tunnis, helping to curate. Also very familiar with the work of God's love.
If you've never painted, God's love we deliver. And you have a chance to walk through that operation, I'll tell you what it gives me. It gives me hope.
So get ready, New York. The cows are coming. In Brooklyn, Roger Clark, New York.
Okay, so that gives you a sense of that. Oh, boy. This is a crazy. Okay, try that. Okay. Moving on. So in our area, the Chinook salmon are listed as endangered. And there are two species of Chinook salmon. And these are a part of the rivers here in our area. So the public art project that I'm proposing is creative, it's engaging, it's connecting communities, it's honoring the land and the natural resources, and it's raising awareness to protect our waterways and create funding for future projects. So the idea is similar in the sense of this group of people who did the elephant parade in raising awareness around the Asian elephant who is on the verge of extinction. And they essentially had hundreds of painted elephant sculptures that were all over the city. And then they raised awareness and then auctioned off the elephants that were then, the proceeds went to the Elephant Family Organization. So similar to that, my idea is to commission an indigenous artist to design the salmon form, essentially going with the salmon because of the Chinook salmon being endangered. Creating multiple fiberglass salmon sculptures and then working with area artists and community groups to embellish and paint them and decorate them, and then install them all over Oregon City in front of businesses with a coordinated art walk or map to bring people to different parts of the city. And then eventually auction them off for a fundraiser to protect salmon or to smart the recognition of the Chinook tribe. So that's, that's my idea. Question? Yes?
My sister actually did this, and I helped her with it in Southington, probably about three years ago. And I already have a company, like, we've been talking about this with Doka for years. And so I actually have a company, and it's a year-long project, and it raises a ton of money. And how you do it is, there's companies that already have sculptures that you can buy. If you want something specific, they will make it for you. So you, they sell the sculptures, and I'm trying to think that, I wish I had it all. I have all the expenses and everything on it. What you usually do is you make a large one, you choose a large one, and you choose a smaller one. So they're the apple fest, they're the apple, apple capital of Southern, of Connecticut, Southington. So they had one large apple about four feet, and then they had an apple core. So you start off, or they started off, and this is recommended, like, these companies do it for a business. So they will give you a whole business plan of how to do it. So you start it off where you ask for sponsors. And my sister had like a wine and hors d'oeuvre party, and she invited all of the town in and all the artists that were selected. And they had all their portfolios. So at that time, they matched the artists, and they, the city, the city, who the contributors, the sponsorships, chose an artist. Between the artist and that sponsor, they would decide, do you want to represent your business? Do you want me to just have free hand? Do you want to buy and sponsor a large apple, let's just say 1,000? Or do you want to do an apple core for 500? So then the artist took the time to paint them and put them all together. Then, and this is all over here, then they displayed them in the gallery that she had. And then, after they were painted, they brought them to an auto body shop where they're sealed. So you can keep them outside for the whole year. No problem with it. The sponsors were given the choice. You can either purchase this for, it was like double the paid price, 2,000, or you can put it into auction at the end of this event, at the end of this program. And almost all the people bought them right offhand. And I think they sold the ones for like, I'd want to say $2,000 to $3,000. And they did, I think it was 40. I think they had 40 apples. And then, I mean, and while you're doing this, how you sell it to the sponsors is you're going to give them marketing for a whole year. Their name is going to be in the newspaper. It's going to be on social media. Because then what they did from then is they have a very small town parade. They took all the apples and they put them on shopping carts. That's what I went down for. And you're in the parade with 40 apples that have all the sponsorships. They're all brought back to the gallery again where there's a big party. Then, at the very end of the year, they had a gala in town where all the apples that weren't bought are brought to the gala and they're auctioned off. They made, I think, clear, they made between $40,000 and $50,000 off that program. And it was a blast. It was so fun. And I have, I have videos on my phone of the parade, and I have videos of the gallery with all these beautiful apples. So we've talked a lot in Doka for how do we do this in Oregon City? And we talked about salmon, and we talked about blue herons. But that, it's, it's a really fun project. It's a lot of work, and it makes a ton of money. And I, and kind of to add on to that, downtown Oregon City just received $100,000 grant for lighting. They still, I think, have some obstacles to get through with the city. But one of the things that Doka wanted to do and asked me if I would present it to the Art Commission is to have sculptures of light bulbs, which can have LED lights inside of them and have those sponsored, you know, downtown. Because they need to match, match, they have, because it's, they got a grant for lighting all down.
But what, light bulbs? Light doesn't need to be a light.
They need matching funds.
I'm sorry, Tris, I don't mean to be rude, but I kind of feel like Mary just gave this great presentation, and we should be like addressing questions to Mary about her presentation and at least considering it for a few minutes. And I feel like we haven't even started to address it yet. I mean, I loved what you said, but I was wondering if we could give her the time that I think she really deserves for.
Sure.
So how much, so it's my understanding there's $40,000. So how much of the 40,000 would you anticipate being needed for a project like this?
I have no idea. This was just my idea because I was trying to come up with something that would meet our mission and serve the public art part.
One of the things that I really like, so I really like the concept of kind of a project where the community is involved, right? And, and this is also something that actually is a project. Like for us, it would take, as you were saying, a year of time to figure out all of the different details that are associated with it. It would be something that, that, there would be a lot of things to work through. But I could, and I could see there being a portion of our budget being able to be assigned or in the broader context for a project that involves the community in an art project, which, you know, depend, maybe every two years, one of those are selected. So that's, that's how I view it.
I think, well, I know the answer to this in my head, but I'm just curious to hear your articulation of, like, anyway. Who to, in this project, what or whom do you feel is really important to support through the execution of this project? Do you know what I mean? Like, do you know what I'm asking?
I think so.
Like, who is this supporting? Like, when looking at, thinking about the year length of the project, like, this one was geared towards, you know, fundraising for a nonprofit. Whereas fundraising isn't necessarily one of our goals. Our goal is to support arts in Oregon City. So I guess I'm looking for the articulation of how this project would be guided in a way that it would do that. I mean, I kind of know the answer, but I don't want to put words into your mouth.
I mean, I was bringing the idea here so we could kind of talk about it together and put our heads together. And is this just to be like a sketch to start the conversation?
Totally. Yeah, we don't have to know the answer either. My thought is that, to me, it would really be about supporting the artists and then bringing that cultural experience to the city while also promoting the city and bringing people to the city to see the, you know, the artists and the arts happening locally.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could probably brainstorm some ideas about like hiring specific artists to then work with community groups. Like, say, a couple elementary schools, and they all do some kind of after-school program, and this artist is kind of like guiding them or something like that.
Cool.
So, yeah, I think that would come.
Yeah. I mean, as somebody who grew up in Wisconsin, I'm very familiar with the art cows. I've seen many of them firsthand. And I would love to see some sort of art fish or bird or I don't know what other critters or Oregon City things we could come up with. I mean, salmon is a kind of, it's like, seems like the obvious choice, but.
I think I was thinking about honoring the land that we're on and the peoples from this land, and thinking about the past, present, future part of our mission. And the part of bringing community and trying to bring people to Oregon City to see these. And just bringing more art into, into visibility for people in Oregon City.
Cool. Thank you. Just go for it.
Okay, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I would love to just pick one idea and do it. I think this is definitely a great frontrunner. I mean, you put together a good presentation. You connected it with something that's really deeply rooted about Oregon City. You figured out how, you know, by looking at how other communities have done this to sort of present, here's how you might do it, and here's where it might go. The only thing I'm not quite sure about is the very end, like, about like, if we're doing this, and then at the end of it, there's money involved. I'm not sure exactly what to do with the money. I mean, I think giving it to, you know, I mean, I think it's completely appropriate to help the Chinook tribe get recognition. I guess I don't understand all the politics of it. I thought they already.
Yeah, they're not federally recognized as a tribe, and so they need mental health services and housing services and all kinds of services because they're not getting any of that right now.
Perfect.
Is this affiliated with the Grand Ron tribe?
I don't think so.
I think it should personally be a percentage donated to that. We need to start fundraising for the Art Commission. So I think maybe 20% or something like that.
Yeah, my first, my first round of this was that it would support future projects of our commission. But I really think that we should also have some part of it go to a group that is disadvantaged and needs support.
Do you think, since we're a city commission, do you foresee any, like, objections from the community? Do you, do you see any ways in which the community might object to this or see it as, I don't know, a problem?
I haven't lived here that long, and I would not really have any sense of that.
I'm just asking.
I have no idea. Yeah, there is, you can't make everybody happy.
But my weird question is, what a limitation of the city of doing that? Because there's probably certain groups, you know, they can fund, you can't fund them since it would be technically city dollars. It would have to get passed them. So that would be one question. And I do like the idea of like this kind of multi-artist public art project. I'll call it a campaign because it would take place over several, you know, weeks or months. Once the fish, you know, or whatever we decide on is, you know, being created and then displayed. And then, you know, it could be, we could do something else where we could invite the tribe to come and give, you know, a ceremony or something with them, or something to that effect. One other kind of idea that I'll throw out, and I've talked, I think I've practiced some people about this before, was similar, was taking, you know, having artists submit design ideas for actually wraps that would go around, you know, several of the white vehicles that Oregon City has in its fleet. I see these white vehicles driving around Oregon City all the time. They just look like a blank canvas to me. And as a way to have kind of this mobile art theme around the city, because they're already driving around, it'd be a good way to maybe advertise the commission that, hey, we're out here, we're doing stuff. People who, you know, can't get down to the ceremonies or to see the fish or, you know, they're, they're all over Oregon City community, so it would be, you know, more available to people. But that's another idea that I'll just kind of toss aside. I know we aren't going to get maybe done to the brass tacks today, but.
Can I, I don't want to jump ahead, but I do want to keep us moving forward. Because I feel like my paper is going to take us back a little bit. Do you guys have any others before I move us?
I just want to say, Tris, I appreciate you sharing about your experience with this. And I think that that would be very valuable if we do decide to go forward with a project like that.
I do have a plan. I have numbers on it. I have, you know, something. So I'd love to talk to you more, more about it if I can be of help.
Good? Everybody's good? Okay, so I think, did everybody get my handout that I sent around? Well, I'm sorry, Jen. I, we could hold it up to the camera, but I couldn't figure out how to like send it to you. Unless you text, send me your phone number, I could text you a picture. Yeah?
I can type it into the chat.
Okay, Mary says she's going to type it in the chat. What's that?
Is this public?
What's that?
Can I?
Yes, I will. No.
Don't put your phone number on there.
Don't type it in the chat?
No.
Okay.
No, you can type into the chat. Don't put her number into the chat.
Yes.
Don't share public, private information.
There isn't in here.
All right, I'm opening the email.
I just can't email it right now because I don't have access to that on my phone, so I can't send it to you. I tried earlier and it didn't work, so I don't really know how to do that. Okay, I apologize. I think just for the sake of Jen and everybody, I'm just going to read it. So in thinking about our work sessions today and thinking about our $20,000, that is now up to a whopping 40,000 that we're all anxious to start spending. And we want to find a transparent, organized, structured way to spend that. So what I did was kind of think about the bigger budget outline. So my budget brainstorm, she is what I call it, and the things that I. she is what I call it, and the things that I hear us talking about the most. So I did two sections with different bullets underneath. The first one, I'm labeling as annual grant programs with three different categories, one being, I'm just going to read them, grants to local nonprofits for arts projects that contribute to the advancement of arts in Oregon City, grants to local businesses that contribute to the advancement of arts in Oregon City, and grants to individuals that contribute to the advance, advancement of arts in Oregon City. So I've divided them up into those three different categories because there'd be different criteria for a nonprofit versus a business versus an individual. But all of them would have to be Oregon City-specific and contributing to Oregon City specifically. Like, if you think of an individual, it can't just be them painting alone in their studio, and we're going to like pay them for that. Like, they have to be engaging in the city in some way or contributing in some way, and it's the business as well, has to be engaging and contributing to the city in some way, some way in an artistic fashion. Note on that one, so like new murals and mural maintenance on private property could qualify to apply for grants. So if a business wanted to have a grant, or have a grant, have a mural on their, they could apply for one of these grants to work with an artist or get the funding to have a mural. So that is one of the things that would fall, that we've talked about, that would fall under these categories. Everybody with me so far? Cool. So I added the note because the murals, I know something that's really important to everybody. And so the second category is public art programs with three different categories under that. New permanent public art in Oregon City parks and public spaces that contributes to cultural advancement, diverse representation, and community investment. So example of something that would go under that budget category would be, well, it would be murals. It could be the permanent one. I have permanent and temporary separated. So if it was a mural on a public building, more permanent sculptures, it could be indoor or outdoor sculptures, like libraries and other, or other libraries, not a building, but you get the idea. Underneath that, temporary art in Oregon City, parks and public spaces to contribute to cultural advancement, so on and so forth. So temporary, I separated those out because there are things like we were talking about with just now, with, with the putting the things on the vehicles, that would be more of a temporary public art thing. There was talk about doing like rooftop murals. That would be a temporary thing. I know there was, wasn't you guys, Tris, that did the artwork in the business windows? Things like, that's like another example of temporary art in public spaces. So that there's just that differentiate, differentiation to investing in permanent, which would cost more probably, and then the temporary, which is kind of fun and more like on the fly. The fish would probably, could fall under temporary too, I think. Yeah, and that goes to my third one, events, programming, and promotions to highlight Oregon City's existing public art. And I think that could be a whole, like, way that we connect with the city, and it's something that I know everybody's talked about, is really wanting to connect with the community and have the arts commission have a presence. And so I did these as just like broad outlines of trying to think about all these things we've talked about and how to bucket them into budget categories of like, all right, so we have an annual grants program, let's designate $10,000 to that, and if people want to use that, here is the categories and the criteria to access that $10,000. Does that make sense to everybody? And then like public art programming, let's say we put $15,000 towards that, and then we have these different areas, and then figure out how to break that down. Yeah, everybody's with me? So I guess my first question to you guys is, what did I miss? What's not on here that we've been talking about that I'm forgetting?
You got a lot.
I tried.
You've been listening.
I have been listening.
Great blueprint.
I have been listening. But, I mean, I want to know what you guys think.
Yeah, I really liked it. And, and I do think, with your question, what did I miss? That I know that things such as like studies have been talked about, you know.
Research, yeah.
Yeah, research and studies, you know, setting that foundation.
That's a really good one.
I know I left early at the last meeting, and there was this conversation about how, you know, should we move forward with the 1% for art? And, you know, there was some conversations about surveys and.
That's a good one.
Different things like that. It seems like there might be a small bucket or something like that.
Yeah, and I don't really see how that would fit under either of those, but I think that's something that's important to us, to stay knowledgeable and connect with the people in the community. Thank you.
Well, and the most important thing to make it sustainable is fundraising. We need to think about the salmon as one good way, but other ways of maybe it's a thing we could do anyway.
I did want to remind you of one important element that's still missing, or maybe not missing. I might have missed it myself, is arts is including music, theater.
Oh, I think when I say arts, that includes, I meant all of it.
Okay.
Arts with an S to me means all, all of it.
Okay, okay. That's what I, I just wanted to make sure.
But no, that's good, because some people might not catch, catch that. But when I say arts with an S, I mean, I mean all of it.
And so like, under the public art program, perhaps would that fall more into, let's say if there was like a dance production or, I don't know, something like that, that would be more temporary art or versus.
Event, yeah. I mean, it would depend, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I do think that as this got teased out a little more, having a little more explanation and.
Yeah, I think I was just trying to come up with the broad, you know, buckets, and then we can, I feel like deciding the specifics of how we're going to like create, like, if it was a grants thing, we have to like decide the criteria for the application, and that's like, oh, two hours right there. You know what I mean? But I don't think we need to decide that in like budget allocation. That fundraising, I'm writing that one down.
Would programming include, say, artist resources or community art resources, like we've talked about a community art center, or, you know, things we can do to help artists in the community by giving them some type of?
I think that would be the grants program.
Would be all the grants?
It would either be a grant to a nonprofit if they wanted to start or are currently running an art center or a business, if they have, you know, arts-related programming, whether it's dance classes or the classes or whatever, and they need support. Or an individual trying to teach a workshop for the first time, and they don't have enough money to buy the supplies they need.
I guess in my mind, I was thinking the art center wasn't necessarily going to be a third party running it. I thought it was something that we wanted within the Oregon City governance structure.
I would, yeah, I would think that's an ultimate goal, is to eventually get to that point.
But I thought as an advisory board, that running an art center wasn't even, like, it's not even possible for us.
Well, and it would be a city, it would be run. But it would be an ultimate goal, I think, of the Arts Commission to, maybe 10 years from now.
But we could, we would be advising the city to do it, not doing it ourselves. We would be advising the city, and we would not be providing the funding or the, or the people or the structure. We would just be advising the city to take that on as a project.
But they could apply for grants.
Well, this, but the city wouldn't apply for a grant. I mean, we are.
But we could apply for grants. We could apply for grants.
We could apply for grants, yeah.
For.
For that. And we could do fundraising for, you could take the money from the salmon and use it as seed money for your art center.
Yes. But the art center would not be ours, because we're an advisory committee, not the city.
True.
One, one thing that I think about is that research bucket or that, you know, with regards to that art center.
Yeah.
Like, like, it seems like there would need to be a small amount of money potentially from our funds to be able to frame up what it would take, you know, scope what, and I've seen this in this group, some folks have done some additional research on what other communities have done and whatnot, but just to be able to set the framework for that conversation.
Yeah. I like that. So that's something we could add to our research, our studies, research of like art center, and then we could do that research and then advise the city. Look at all this, you know, we did the numbers, we're handing it to you, we're advising, this is the building, this is the structure, this is how it could happen. The community thinks. Go for it.
What about, what about, two thoughts come up. One is placemaking, and would that fall under temporary?
I guess it depends on what you mean by placemaking and to what degree, and who's doing the placemaking.
I'm imagining like, uh, public art in a circle roundabout and having the community design it and paint it.
That would be under the public art programming, either permanent or temporary, probably, depending on nature of that.
And then, we've talked about this before, but visibility and having like a designated artful, colorful, awesome website.
That would go under the events, programming, and promotions to highlight arts in Oregon City.
I know we've, we know there's insurance on all the public art that Oregon City has, but there might be additional maintenance that doesn't fall under that insurance, right? So that might be something we want to include is maintenance art.
But doesn't Public Works do that?
Public Works.
Does all the maintenance or?
Yeah, on the public sculptures.
I think part of it would be.
Yes.
Needs to be done.
Okay.
If that was so directed, then.
That could be part of our research, our research category.
Emma, I'm sorry.
Commissioner. Just, so just like the way that the arts, like ultimately having a goal of helping to support an arts center in Oregon City isn't necessarily something within the framework. There's a couple of other places where I think there's some really big things happening right now in Oregon City that we want to kind of help support. And the big, I think the biggest one is the new Clackamas County Courthouse that's being built. And like, it just seems like it's a natural fit for the Arts Commission to somehow get involved, you know, with advising.
What does that mean, Clackamas County? Would we have any say in that?
Well, I mean, it's being built here in Oregon City. I.
Yeah, but is that in Clackamas?
Well, yeah, I don't know. I mean, all I know is that the city and state are spending $318 million on it, and there's a public component that's part of it. Sorry, Tris.
I received an email through Clackamas County Arts Alliance from Judge Steele from the county, wanting to be, get in contact with someone for murals inside the courthouse. So I think by, what is it, federally funded? Whether it's federal or state, they are, they are responsible for 1% to the arts. They have to give that. So they're starting that now. So, and I wanted to bring that out tonight. What would our B process? What's our, you know, how do we handle that? That we have been contacted to contact for the new courthouse for artwork.
Commissioner, there might be a way to do a request, but that is up to the state and the federal funds on if they choose to do that, to invite us to do that. So we could potentially write a request.
Yeah.
Could we participate? But they do have their own processes and their own systems on how they contract the 1% artwork and.
Right, that's right. I just think that's, that's, you know, a courthouse that's being built in Oregon City and we're the Arts Commission, it's definitely, you know, in our interest to, yeah, yeah, definitely. I mean, sometimes you got to put yourself in places to like, get your, your voice heard and to advocate for what's your passion.
Because they might not even thought about.
They don't even know we exist. Exactly.
Well, it might be an opportunity to build relationships with different organizations and, again, I know different people are involved in different things, but like with regards to the Clackamas County Arts Coalition.
Ties to a.
Arts Alliance.
Arts Alliance, yeah.
There's Cultural Coalition too, which is probably more likely for the 1%, but.
Well, and I do, I work for the county, so I know that there's art in the county all the time, you know, on a regular basis. And so it may be that, that some organizations are already connected into that, but we should build our relationships with them and do something in partnership, I think would be a great way to see if we can, can be involved.
I was talking to Victoria from the Chamber of Commerce, Director of Chamber of Commerce, and she suggests, suggested a meeting with Martha Schrader to discuss ideas about the 1% of the new county courthouse and how that could be used in Oregon City, just for some conversation, just to say, these are our thoughts. Wanted to bring that out to the Art Commission tonight, if you would be agreeable to that.
During the work session, we can't make any kind of distinction. This is a conversational.
So in thinking about that, I think we're getting off track a little bit because we wouldn't need any money for that. That's just more of a, like, community collaboration, get to know you, connecting, talking with our.
And I would have to also investigate exactly how that system works, you know? Do we have to actually ask the city commission for permission to do that, since we are representing them with that? Or they might say, no, you can't talk to them about it. And I've got to understand how that works before I proceed down that road. So I'll give you guys some feedback from my.
Yeah, but I'm all for something that we could think about in the future when we have more of our footing, is that I'm definitely into like a percent for the arts kind of watchdog situation of where sometimes these projects will get money and will use it in very not artful ways because they have to, and they just like ask the architect to make some thing that looks kind of like an art thing, you know, and like, just no. Like, so if there's opportunity for accountability that provides opportunities for artists and more and better art in Oregon City, but that's a whole thing, and it doesn't cost us money because it's them spending their money like they're supposed to. Anyway. But going back to the budget thing, so studies and research, which is an awesome idea, and I added art center as a project we could put under that, arts and research, and then community, because we talked about wanting to reach out and get to know and be like, what are you guys interested? What do you, you know, is the community need? And then, Josh, you said, public art maintenance. And so that's something, I don't know if that would cost us any, maybe it would, but.
To check on, so we can.
Yeah, to check on it.
Or, you know, I haven't looked at every piece of public art in the city, but if, it's like, are all of them, they all have, they're designated like, you know, plaque with the name and things like that? Do we want to, if not, do we want to add that kind of thing? It could be something like that, where Public Works isn't going to do that.
Yeah, get them documented.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. For real. I mean, and that could cost us some money. So, yeah, that's like the web design that goes along with it, sort of.
Real quick here, just a couple other questions on the grants. So you have nonprofits. Are you thinking nonprofits, and like, I'm thinking like associations, and I'm trying to think of a good example here, but when I think nonprofit, I think of a business, not necessarily a, just a group.
But that's not.
But like, if you're talking, like, if you wanted to do a community project that's in each of the neighborhoods, and you work with the neighborhood associations, those aren't businesses, they're not necessarily nonprofits, but they're associations?
I would say.
Could you work, could we work with?
I would say an individual, because there's not really, somebody has to be responsible for the grant and the grant budget. And if the neighborhood, so the neighborhood association had an individual that wrote and applied for the grant, they could do it that way. But.
I mean, I think they could. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
I mean.
There's no reason they couldn't.
Mayor, Mayor McCripse used to be, for the longest time, was the president of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. And I know that we pretty routinely, like, had events that happened within the neighborhood that cost money. I mean, there was some kind of a budget. They did mailings. I mean, we got, at our, at our monthly meetings, we got reports on the budget and the treasurer. So, I mean, there must be some, some of them.
Yeah, I mean, they could be, they could be a nonprofit, but.
I would have to probably clarify what 501(c) versus another type of entity, because I think the neighborhood associations, and I'll give more information, sorry, I don't have this because this is the first time this came up, are actually an element of the city.
Yeah.
So that actually kind of complicates things a little differently, or may not complicate things differently. So.
Yeah.
I'll put that again on my notes of things to check in for you guys.
But we could figure that out in the detail.
Yeah.
And I know in the Metro Enhancement Grant, they specifically say neighborhood associations and advisory councils of the city are eligible for the Metro Grant.
Yeah.
Daniel, that's what I was going to say.
Are you recording this meeting?
Yes.
They're recording, so.
Well, unfortunately, we couldn't get that set up enough to be able to do that, but they're recording it through the television station.
Um, my other question was on your note here about the new murals and mural maintenance on private property. Is that private property within public view or are you thinking someone who has a large estate could?
No, I mean, no, and they would be applying and so we would have to approve it. But like the new mural that just went up on.
Ninety-nine, I mean?
Yeah, ten, ten years from now, if they need, you know, if they, if that business wanted to apply to do some touch up or some graffiti removal, they could do that.
So, yeah, it would follow the same kind of principle that we have with the meal program itself is that it would be public view and.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, I mean, I think this is a great blueprint. And I, I mean, I think that I can see Mary's idea fitting into this.
Yeah.
Pretty easily. And I can see a lot of other ideas that we talked about fitting into this. It seems like a good direction to go forward now.
Thank you, Ben.
So. Now we need to figure out things.
Let's talk dollars, you guys. Daniel, can you, let's, can I ask you, should we think annually or just think in dollar amounts?
Well, um.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think Triest and I have had this conversation before where I, I want to make sure. So we're in a biennium budget.
So biennial.
So we're in the second half of the biennium. So as of July first, we only have one year period of time left in the, the budget. As I learn about the budget process and how we develop our, like for example, carryovers. Will any of this element carry over into the next year? Those are going to be questions that we're going to have to sort out. But for right now, our key element is, is help kind of define what we, the forty thousand that we are there. And then put together, when we're all sorted out, put together the plan of action that we would propose to the arts, or to the, sorry, city commission. And to get their approval to move forward on.
Yes, I, I think for the purpose of doing our budget, we need to not necessarily think about how to spend all of the money we have. And how to allocate our budget, I guess would be biannually going forward. And then we can like be transparent about how we spend our money and then start to pull. Do you get, does that make sense to you, right?
The one concern that we always have in a budget cycle is, uh, especially as we have new commissioners coming in line, um, is in the overall budget system of that is, uh, what we have today. We may not have tomorrow or we may have more of, depending upon whatever the budget comes up. So I want to kind of keep that in mind as you pass your fishing line forward to try to catch the future is also be careful about how far. And I've actually been on the budget committee.
Yeah, as someone who's, who's, who's served on the budget committee, I'd say, you want to spend all of your money?
Yes.
Because that shows the budget folks that you spent all the money, maybe you need more.
Right. I'm just saying, if we're writing our budget for the future, we can't write a budget based on the forty thousand we have because this is an anomaly, because we haven't spent anything. We should write our budget based on a prediction of what it's going to be, but then work to spend the money that we have with the criteria that we, and system we have established.
Can I ask?
Does that make sense?
A question about this approach is mine.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm, I don't understand how we would make an accurate budget with this forty thousand dollars. If we are interested in maybe immediately pursuing the salmon, um, salmon on migration project, not on, I don't know, whatever.
Well, if, let's.
But, but if we get a night, if we approach it from a project basis, like, hey, what are our, like, this is our framework. We have seven different categories now grouped into two sections. Instead of weighting each of those, I feel like going, uh, getting some projects within that framework that we know we want to prioritize. Um, and then assessing their budgets on a more individual basis might be more accurate and let us start approaching these projects faster.
I, I think I know what you mean and what I, this is what I think summarizes what I think I'm hearing. And I, I like the idea. So you use the forty thousand we have, allocate it under these categories. But then that would require that, um, I don't know, a year from now or two years from now or whatever. In the future, we would have to do, go back again to real, because we wouldn't have the same funding going forward that we do now.
No, what I'm saying is exactly because we don't have the same funding, if we prioritize the programs, not these line items you've made, but like the fish program. That's what I'm identifying as a program or car wrappers, like these, these.
So you're saying, let's, let's say, let's commit to say, two to three projects in the next year.
Right, yeah, no, I, I agree with that. I totally agree with that. What, what I'm saying is going forward as we do those projects, we do other projects, having a, a structure to, like a framework of like, we do, we do the fish cow project. And then three months later, we want to do artwork on the vans. And then we can go to that budget line of those and be like, okay, well, we spent this much on the fish. We have this much left to do. Do you, like, if, if we have.
Well, yeah, because we don't know how much the, the salmon will cost at this point. We're going to have to do some.
Right.
Research and fortunately.
Like with grants, you don't, you don't know until the people apply. But you, for a grant program, you would have a, a big chunk of money and then you get the applications. And then you decide and you allocate based on the applications that you receive and the amount of money you have. Same with the public art, we could have a chunk of money, figure out the, the programs that we want to do. And like, maybe we have enough to do Mary's and like two other things, or maybe we have enough to do that and one other thing. But if we put a money amount on it and then go forward from there. Or maybe the fish are too expensive and we do two smaller projects to show up.
One way that I think about it.
I mean, maybe I'm off base, I don't know.
So how are? So what if we allocated fifty percent of the revenues to the grants program and fifty percent to public art, right? I'm giving an example. We're going to say, we're going to split it fifty fifty, which basically means there's twenty thousand available in the art and the grants program. Um, and, and then we get into the detail because again, things that I don't know how, you know, like, what, what amounts are people looking for? And, you know, it, it's twenty thousand reasonable. But let's just say twenty thousand that we develop a program that we can be providing grants to local artists. Then there's twenty thousand available under this public art program. And I've also like tapped on that research that falls under there. So then there's that twenty thousand dollars. And then we're thinking, and then, um, and every two year, we just happen to be in the middle of the two year. We think about how those twenty thousand dollars could be spent. And so in this year, we're thinking, oh, well, we really want to focus on the temporary art. A, a, a project to support temporary art and the community, something like what Mary had proposed. We get a little deeper into, oh, that actually requires a ten thousand dollar investment. And so then we see that chunk and we know we're investing there. And then we have a little bit, then we realize, oh, okay, we still have a little bit more left to do, um, a research project or a survey or.
And if we developed projects that had an element of sustainability, like these programs are, projects are something we'd like to see maintained for ten years. Then we're going to have to develop fundraising events outside of our anticipated budget from the city, since we can't anticipate that as much. That would be something we just have to account for.
And it would give us a, you know, um, purpose, structure to, for the fundraising. Uh, we are fundraising for this particular thing, so it can be an ongoing and the community could see that. This is what, you know.
So another option, I'm, I'm thinking of the same way, but like, how do you structure this? If you'd said, we want to try and aim for one to three projects in a year, but we want to prioritize those projects. So we start with the multi artist project. We want to, we want to get a, uh, figure out what is that going to cost to make it run really well? And then if there's budget left over, go to the next project and then go to the next project if there's funding left over. And that way we can come out, we know we're, we're making sure that each project we have is success. So that next year, when we go back to the budget committee and say, we need more money, look at what we've done with the money we've had. They can say, okay, yeah, you guys have run a good project. Rather than if we split it, your grant program might not take off like you think it will or might not work out the way you think it is. And if you only have twenty thousand then for another project and it comes off, um, you know, not quite to the quality that we want, then you're kind of, you know, stuck in the middle, right? So that would be kind of my recommendation is that we, we have, we identify three projects and prioritize those projects. And then we start working through the details and say, okay, this one's going to cost us twenty five thousand. This one's going to cost us ten, this one's going to cost us five. Um, and we have it, and we move forward.
Well, that could be accomplished too by making an annual schedule where we really parcel them out and give us time to respond to, well, how much money did the fish project raise? Or what potential is there for it to raise money? And then we can say, all right, now it's time to look at the grants. The fish project is already going, so here we got to the grants and we anticipate we'll have twenty thousand assets from that. So if we, if we schedule it out, we might be, and then we could demonstrate to the city too, like, hey, if we keep this momentum, we're going to accomplish these things and keep going into the next year.
I think what we're starting to get to, um, that hopefully we can sort out before she gets too late tonight.
We have forty-five minutes.
If what are, what are our priorities? Because I, I feel like that's what we're all kind of hinting at and dancing around is each of us has different priorities. And, and I think the projects are, are great and they're probably going to be super fun. But to me, grants is, is not a low priority. I, I feel like, um, these places need support and we keep wanting to provide that, but we don't have a transparent process to do that. And without a grants program, um, we, we're just not going to be able to provide that kind of support. Even if we don't put a lot of money there, I think. Anyway, I, I think thinking about our priorities is.
I think a, a grants program is going to be a very doable sort of thing because it's more paperwork than it is site specific art making. So it's more about being a facilitator for distributing funds to organizations that actually do the work, which is good work for a commission.
Well, I think pairing it too, in the same year with a project like the fish project is a good way to gain potential publicity for it. Because it, it will take effort at this point. If we started tomorrow to open a grants program, it's going to take a lot of marketing effort on our part. And if we pool our efforts into this other art project to get some of the momentum from that, to also bring attention to the grant program. Maybe it's because the fish parade ends and we get to talk about the grant program or something creative along that line. That might be, we could still allocate some to the grants. Maybe we'd end up even making money from the fish that could be towards this. But I think it's a timing issue and I, that's why I'm hesitant to start projects with the grants first. That doesn't mean I'm against.
You mean budgets?
Signing funding right now to it, but I would wait to start the grant program until we gain more publicity.
And I think one thing to think about too is with a grant program is who, um, creates the criteria? Do we have to hire that out? Do, are we an active commission? That, well, we've been told that, that we're not supposed to be active, that we have to hire somebody. So do we have to allocate funds for that? If we were to create a grant program, who are we able to as a group, anybody here, to be able to write out criteria and do the grant? And do all the applications and do the judging and the juring? Or do we have to spend money to have an outside company do that?
I think in terms of how it comes off, especially I'm thinking more along the lines, being successful to hopefully increase budget in future years is, if our first priority is just giving money away, that doesn't come off as well as we did something that the city got recognized for kind of being the lead on, right? Where we run a, uh, arts commission event and the city is involved and, you know, they're getting their, you know, um, uh, fifteen minutes from as well. They're going to respond to that much better than, we've given it to these artists, they've done some great work. But for these businesses and they've done some great murals or something, it's just not quite the same, right? I think it's a better thing to have a project that is more run by the city perspective to get better buy-in for the next budget cycle.
Maybe we should start moving toward a constructive action item, um, based on what everyone said. It, it could be almost anything. I mean, I think that you have a really good blueprint here.
But just a reminder, or sorry.
But, um, it would be great if, you know, since we're heading into the last half hour, forty-five minutes of our meeting, if we started to, because this is our time to really do this. I mean, I know that out of this time, Tris can, and whoever can, but it would be good to kind of leave this meeting tonight with something tangible.
Yeah, because the ultimate goal for a work session is to actually have something to, to basically vote on at your next official meeting. That says, we have come up with this to say that we would like to propose this and to the city commission as an actionable item, all in favor kind of thing, go from there.
So how about, how about we come up with, I, I don't want to put a number on it because maybe it doesn't need a specific number. I don't know, three to five-ish of like our, our priorities. Um, and then we can see how those priorities fit within this structure of like, because we'd, we'd like to marry his idea and all of these other things.
And do we have anybody else here too that has any input on what they, from the recommendations? What would be their wish list? Has everybody had a voice of, um, and I, I know it would probably fit underneath the, the plan that you have. But Commissioner Luco, do you have anything of the list that you would really like to see as a, as an item to?
No, I think these are both for you. This, this is great, that was great.
I will say, I mean, for me, I, um, Tammy Jo's breakdown is wonderful and I think it helps me to have examples in each of these lists. And I'm particularly excited by events and programming in the arts in Oregon cities, things that bring a lot of the community together. I think I'm responding really well to that, uh, with the fish idea too, um, because it's, it's bridge, it's bridging a lot of different communities simultaneously. And so, um, I think of for events, this, whatever the fish project might overlap with that, but like the, the fest, the summer festival. I have always wanted to see a light festival here in Oregon City, which would take place in the winter and maybe engage people in a less common wintery time. Where you bring light artists or light activities in a, a meeting where people can walk through and be really immersed. And so I'm interested in how events can be used throughout the year as well, um, because we get pretty summer heavy with some of these.
And support some organizations that need matching funds and partnerships. And they're looking to the art commission.
Encourage those art groups to come here and help us bring attention and, and fun times to Oregon City. So I just wanted to say, when I look at that events and programming and promotions to highlight Oregon City's existing public art, those are some of the examples I'm, I'm immediately thinking about and excited about.
So, I mean, to me, in, in my brain, I would put a number on public art programming and any of the things that are on, under those dots, the, the events, the, the, like, all of that would fit under that number. And then we would decide which project we would want to do first. Whether it's, yeah.
I might even try and break it down even more. I mean, you've broken it down.
We could say, like hypothetically, we said twenty, if we said twenty thousand for public art programming, then we would have to assign a budget to say salmon. And salmon gets ten thousand of that. And then events and programming could, you know.
I want to say one thing we haven't brought up yet and that we talked about a lot is the feasibility study for an art cultural center. Personally, that's really important and close to my heart and I've done a lot of research. Can that fit under one of your items?
Under study and research.
I wonder if we could, um, hear from each person before we go forward to make that decision.
We'll hear from us online.
Are we going to just go around the room?
We've heard from Commissioner Luco, we've heard from Commissioner Jones, we've heard from Commissioner Wilson, we've heard from Commissioner Andrews. We haven't heard anything from, then what's your last name?
Woodward.
Commissioner Woodward or Commissioner.
Under study and research.
We can hear you pretty well.
I can hear exactly what you're saying and can't. It's kind of frustrating.
Are we going to just go around the room?
That's why I've been extra quiet.
Commissioner Jones, we've heard from Commissioner Wilson.
Everybody has said.
Can you hear me right now?
Then what's your last name? Then what's your last name?
Okay.
Woodward.
And I, I really appreciate the breakdown that Tammy Jo gave. Um, and I feel like that's a really great structure for us, like others have done to support and, um, to, to build off of. And I'd be interested in delving into that a little bit more as a way of like saying, here's city commission. Like here's the buckets of funding that we would like to explore. Uh, that's all I, I don't have any other ideas that already haven't been expressed, um, tonight. Of in terms of projects and ways that we can support. I think we've already talked about a lot of, um, so I don't need to add to that.
Mr. Carlson, do you have anything that you?
Um, I think that these bulleted items are great and what we should go by because they're very open to other areas. Um, I do think the grant, um, should be in an equally allotted amount. I don't think it should be kind of open to, you know, if we have so much 10, 15,000 available, I don't think we should give it to one organization that could maybe consume 75% of it. So that's my only recommendation. I think it should be an equally allotted amount. Um, and then again, the fundraising, I think if it is a guaranteed 40,000 every year that the city is going to be providing to the arts commission, then it can be something that's annual. But we need to take into account that we have to probably do fundraising, um, to make it again, sustainable, um, just like any budget and any, um, nonprofit. You just want to make sure that it's something that can be funded. Thank you.
Well, I guess I, I too, you know, support these. And I do think that we should, um, uh, identify funds, as I had said, kind of at least a bucket of funds for the grant program and a certain amount under this public art slash weekend additional bullet. Um, I think we need to, I, personally, I would need more info. I mean, I do think we should do the grant program, but I would need more information into, you know, size of grants that people, that artists may be looking for or where's the niche?
Yeah, that's.
What sort of niche are we looking for, um, there to help maybe id- identify what is the right size? Um, because there is going to be startup stuff that we have to do to establish the program like. But we, so I, I do think we should set some money aside and maybe this first time it isn't as much as other times. Um, but I think that's important because that ends up being the highest priority to me.
And again, back to do we have to hire that out to an outside company to do the criteria?
I can't imagine we would. That would really surprise me.
We've been told two different things.
Daniel, can you help us with that?
Yeah, I mean, there is the, um, you had mentioned those, the, uh, community enhancement grants, right? And, you know, I, I feel as if there are, um, programs that the city has managed. So if you can come back and.
City has grants that they provide.
Yeah, so, so being able to understand, um, I mean, I would imagine there might be some sort of maintenance. Like let's say, let's say we had allocated $20,000. It might be that there's a thousand dollars that needs to be, of that 20,000 that needs to be spent on marketing of the grants and developing of materials and different things like that.
Administrative.
Yeah, little administrative stuff, but, um, but that type of thing, you could provide us information back on.
I, I think all these things are feasible. We just have to commit to wanting to do them and give a broad number and then figure out the budgets of how much do we want to, you know, do with grants? What are, what are the amounts we want, you know, are there going to be $500 grants, $2,000 grants? But those are details that we have to think about within the broader structure.
I, I, I think given the, the timeline that we have and spending the 40,000 and how much time it takes for us to, to make any progress in, uh, the bureaucratic ways of government and being a part of government, um, I'm concerned that we're going to use up our meeting times and define what these grants are and not be able to actually spend the money. Um, so I, I wonder if there's a way to like.
I think the grants would actually spend a lot quicker than programming that would take a year to execute. You could give out $40,000 in a few months with grants. I mean, not saying that we should do that. I'm just, I'm just saying, it, it's not necessarily a slow way of spending money. Um, compared to, you know, uh, longer projects.
My, um, and I'm only going to be on this committee for a short time because I'm only a year committed, but I'll still support your work and stuff like that. But, um, I guess my vote would be to allocate some of the money to grants. And if we're going to pursue a project like the salmon project that we find, I'm, I'm not, I'm sure it's not going to be cheap to do that kind of a project. Um, so just finding a way to like meet both needs, but I would.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I, I don't quite understand if we, when I look at this, my instinct is not to say, okay, annual grants gets $20,000 and then we're going to divide that in some way between nonprofits that apply, local businesses that apply and individuals. In my mind, especially because we have a year and we're starting our first projects, it would be good to isolate one of those and really focus on it and develop a following, develop a really good system that works for people and then be able to see the effect of those grants, give it proper attention while we're doing some other projects in the, in the public art.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. I mean, I feel like we could debate those details, but we have to commit to giving money to grants and then we can decide how to spend them.
Like I wonder if we can piggyback onto the metro enhancement grants that city run anyway and have an additional funding on top of metro is a funding through the art commission.
Yeah, totally different.
But I think that I'm saying and it's administered by the city and would it be possible? I know they would be separate, but would it be possible to?
Well, could, could we, could we empower like one or two members of this group to go home and write up a proposal for how to do? It sounds like we agree that we want to do grants and we want to do public art and maybe come to our next meeting with the proposal that's been submitted to TRIST and that's had a chance for the city to look at, to kind of vet it for if it's something that we can even move forward with. And we, we could just vote on, vote on those and let, let whoever actually does the work of writing something up kind of take the responsibility for, you know, I mean, it sounds like we support grants and we support a public art project. And we've said that we feel like we shouldn't do more than maybe three things or something like that. So it sounds like we've got a good framework. Um, I don't think that all nine of us are going to write something. I mean, I think it's going to have to be one person or two people who write something that's technically filled out and kind of given some, some body to it.
I unfortunately don't have my, oh, I do have my calendar here. Um, we do have one timeframe that we have to be aware of is that any documents that are done for a public, uh, meeting must be provided to me before seven days so that I can then post it because it is public knowledge and it needs to be vetted. I mean, it's, if it's going to be presented in the meeting, it needs to be available to the public that's seven days before the meeting. So.
So that means we have about a week.
And that's why I was like, oh, I gotta grab a calendar here.
But I, I, I'm pretty sure that there's a smart artist in this room who could write a grants proposal in a week.
I don't even feel like we, we need to do that. We just need to commit to saying we want to put some money towards grants and we want to put some money towards public art. And then we can pick what we want to do with the grants, whether we just support nonprofits or just businesses or just individuals. I, I, I don't want to say I don't care, but I feel like it's beside the point at the moment. And part of my decision of which of those to, to select would be based on the amount of budget money we allocate for that. If we end up only putting $5,000 towards the grant program, I'm probably going to choose individuals because those grants are going to be smaller. If we decide to put $30,000 towards grants programs, then I might go for nonprofits because they're going to need bigger money. So I, I feel like right now we, we just need to put some numbers down and be able to like vote on that. And then we can decide what programs we're committed to. And, and I feel like we already know that. We just need to like say it, commit to it and then move forward. Like I think we all like the same program.
I, I guess my thought is with the grants is there's still a lot more details here that we need to figure out. Like what exactly are we giving the grant for? A, a mural, a piece of public art, performance? I mean, what is it just general, they could ask for anything and we just have to approve it? Because that seems like we could get a lot of off the wall things that we don't necessarily, you know, kind of follows what our, our vision is, um, that might not, you know, hit all of our objectives in our vision. Um, so I think there's going to be a lot more work in figuring out.
We have complete control over that.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, I think there's going to be a lot more work to get the program off the ground to have the, everything in place to, before we start getting our grants. I agree, once we have the program running, we can spend money very quickly through it. But getting the program going and the step that to do with the city, because it is city funds you're giving out to people, they probably have a lot of, they have to have legal counsel review it. They're gonna, it's going to go through a lot of process.
I guess I've just done so many grants and written and applied for so many. It doesn't seem intimidating to me like at all.
But this is, this is, this is.
I don't know, I guess I'm.
In a municipality, it's a little different.
But apprehension on that.
I'm not, I'm not apprehensive. I, I think it's a good idea and we should do it, but I'm just saying, I don't think we're going to get it out the door by the next meeting, right? I think it's going to take some months because we're only meeting once a month to get it done and getting the reviews done at, in the city level. I also think that from my perspective, it'd be better to do something where we have a program that we go out, we could maybe even raise funds for, that then circles back into the grant program. Because again, I think the best thing we can do for this public arts in the city is to come back to the commission and the, um, budget committee and say, hey, look, we not only went out and provided a successful campaign to the city that the community got involved with and was excellent, but it also funded this other, you know, program for grants that then helped artists and businesses and stuff and promoted arts even further. So I think that's a much better, broader, bigger message than we gave money to these guys, you know, for this or that. And this is what they did with it. And, you know, whether it was executed properly or not, you know, isn't quite, you know, in our full control once we give them the money, right?
So a little bit holding on that, I think. But this is, uh, another way of looking at it would be, and I'll just say salmon project. It would be helpful to know what the cost of that would be. Like I still feel like that's the big unknown for me with regards to being able to divide up the budget. Um, like I have no idea.
I have numbers.
Um, and so if, if someone said that would actually take $20,000 to do, right? You know, in my head, I'm like, oh, I might take 10,000. Uh, but if, if we knew that that, because it sounds to me that there's a lot of support for doing some investment in a project that can get done, that would involve the community and, you know, and do that. The question then becomes do, what, how much do we need to set aside for that? And then we talk about how much we need to set aside for the grants, which is important to a lot of people as well. Um, and if it's not, I mean, like I, I threw out there 50/50. If that, if that's not the right amount, then there needs to be a different proposal.
What if together now with this last bit of time, we make like two or three different scenarios? Because Triest, it sounds like you have numbers pretty much at your hand for how the FISH project would start. And that could inform any of these scenarios. If Triest came back at our next meeting and was like, hey, I looked at my documentation and it was $15,000 for this part, we can anticipate maybe five to 10, needing five to 10,000 more for these other things. Then we could look at these three scenarios where we weighted our top three projects and readjust that. So maybe the salmon project was first and then we added grants and then we have a different project. And so we had originally set 20,000 for maybe the, the FISH and the grants. And then with her feedback, we'd be able to quickly adjust that based on that kind of, those three breakdowns.
Mr. and Lugo?
Um, I think that's a good idea. I, I don't want to take away from your idea by suggesting a different idea. So if you need time for conversation for it.
No.
But I have, um, if not, I have a proposal, which is why don't we vote on allocating $20,000 to starting a grants program and $20,000 for a public art program? And come to our next meeting with proposals for how to spend that $20,000? I mean, we can take responsibility ourselves as artists to write a proposal and do the research on how much it would cost. I mean, somebody's got to do the work to do that. And, you know, we don't have to sit here in a meeting and figure it out. I mean, it's going to take some at-home time. It sounds like you could figure out, Commissioner Wilson, how to, you know.
Basic outline.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think you could write something and it sounds like you could write a proposal or you could write a proposal for a public arts program.
I mean, if I could work with Mary Andrews on the numbers and the, uh, plan I have, it was all written from the company's companies. Do it. So we could have that to the next meeting. So.
Oh, let's keep in mind the next meeting's in two weeks.
Yeah. My one concern though is if you got your numbers, you said 2019?
Um, yeah, the numbers are going to change.
They're going to be significantly different with inflation.
Well, of course.
So.
I mean, that's just something we have.
And I've been in touch with the company for another, something else, just like yesterday, something on email. And I'm waiting for a response back. So.
I guess my suggestion would be to say, let's say the salmon project, we figure out what it would cost first. We get the numbers and then we can decide how much of that do we want to pay out of our budget? And how much do we want to try and raise in sponsorships? It can sound like your sister would need sponsorships to cover some of the costs of the project. So if we said this is going to end up costing us 35,000, okay, let's not go over 20,000. Let's say 20,000 for grants, we'll have to raise the other 15,000 with sponsorships. Or if it comes back and it's 15,000, it's like, great, awesome. We can do it now without having to go over. We can give 20,000 of the grants or we can, you know, it gives us more options having some actual numbers. So my suggestion would be that we have, uh, trees and Commissioner Andrews go out and, and come up with some numbers, maybe work with Daniel a bit as well and put together, here's what it would cost. So then we can make a decision. And we can decide, you know, if it's like a hundred thousand dollars, it's like, well, maybe we just pass on that one, right? And then we just go to the next, the grants.
And I don't mean to throw a wrench in at the end of the meeting, but, um, I'm involved in a lot of community organizations. Um, there is a tremendous support for an art cultural center from Rotary Club who wants to make it a long-range funding plan to Claphamus Rep who's looking for something. I mean, it goes on and on. And I think that because this has to be the public voice that we listen to and then we bring it to the city, is that I think a feasibility study for an art cultural center is really important. Um, and the biennium is coming up for the budget. There's a 1% through the government, there is so much happening. So at least to start just with a feasibility, just a feasibility, which would be, from my research, would be about $10,000 for a feasibility study. Um, and I just want to put that out there. The city would do that if it's feeling.
If it's not on their budget, I don't think they would do it. It would be something that, I was considering with, the city would, to use the funds that they have to be able to do a feasibility.
Would that be into the research? That one?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. One year.
Yeah, research study or something.
So it sounds like we have maybe three, at least three things that we might be able to vote on in our meeting in two weeks if people could do the work of writing out the proposals for them, for a public art project, for a grants project and for a feasibility study.
Yeah, I think those three items, I'm really comfortable with that. How does everybody feel about those three?
Semi-comfortable. I, I feel like we're really meeting ourselves in a corner by putting our, like, entire, like, public art budget program and like committing it to one project that we're going to base our entire budget on this one idea without really thinking about like all of the other things, like the placemaking and the website and the events with the community. And like, I, I feel like we're getting hyper-focused on single ideas and trying to base our entire budget decisions on these individual ideas as opposed to looking at the broader picture and designating funding and then figuring out if the, if spending that much money on that project is our, truly our priority and best for. is our truly our priority and best for our community.
So.
I mean, another thing that you could.
More in your general overview, like just describe that a little bit more. Like, you want to put funding towards.
So it would be public art programming. And if we put, say, thirty thousand dollars towards public art programming, any, a portion of that thirty thousand dollars could go towards salmon. It could go toward a placemaking event. It could go towards virtual sculpture installation in the park. It could go towards a website, um, because we have thirty thousand designated for those priorities and those activities and those that program. Does that make sense? As opposed to like, we have thirty thousand dollars to do salmon.
Well, I think actually that's how Commissioner Lugo described it as.
But that's not how we've been talking about it. And that's not what we were just requested to make a budget specifically for fish. And that's how we would divide up the money.
Well, I think.
Fish and grants.
In my mind, I see the fish as a starting point for how much would this particular project cost.
Right.
Once we know that, we can see what other program, I mean, we're starting with three. If we did the fish and it was like ten thousand dollars to do with whatever budget we'd make for it. Great. We can see our three things and we know we can add to that and we could go directly to public art program to do that.
Right, I'm just saying, I don't want it to be a fish bucket. I want it to be a public art bucket.
Right. And I think, I think that's what Commissioner Plankton was also saying in that we know that the cost is this amount, we're willing to allocate this much to it, and then we're gonna raise money to cover the rest of the things. So we still have money left over to do other art, public art.
Want to make sure we're thinking about it in that.
I don't think we will have the time to do a grant, a full grant program, improve grants and multiple public arts programs as we currently are with the current budget we have. I think we're gonna get one to two public arts programs or a feasibility study of our program and the grant program. And that'll take us a good portion of a year to get done. Just based on how we've been tracking so far, right? So that's why, that's why I'm throwing it out there, because if we have to spend the money before we, before we lose it, to be able to come back to the um vision and say, we spent all the money, we did all this with it, give us more money next year, please. Use the please. I think that's, that should be our, our, our goal, right? Um, because I, I don't think we're gonna get multiple projects done in a single year. That's just too many things that are involved, especially with doing it through as an advisory board.
Yeah. I I mean, I agree. That's not really what I'm thinking either. I just want to make sure that we're thinking about budgeting, you know, in a broader spectrum that leaves us room to do different projects based on our capacity, what the budgets come back to when we do the research for these different projects and what they're gonna cost. And not, yeah.
I think having the numbers too, we can then go back to the project and say, can we modify this in a way that hits some of the other things? Like a community event, maybe we do, you know, if it's actually a parade, if it's something that's displayed in in a community spot where people can go and interact with the artwork for a time before it's then sold off and raises funds. Um, you know, we can, we can mod, I think the great thing about that project is that it's malleable, right? We can change it a little bit to maybe hit a few of our key points and priorities that we want to target this year.
It does become a community that it's constantly in the social media and the newspapers. Um, I mean, it's just constant marketing and it brings the art fish in into the light and and it makes money.
I mean, we want to, we want to bring revenue into Oregon City. That was one of our, our goals. Making art more visible and making it together and raising, raising revenue. People tourism and travel coming to Oregon City.
Yeah, if it, if it's, if it's big enough that it brings people here, we might even be able to get tourism to tap in a little bit of extra money for some event, right?
And I think. If we knew a guy.
We knew a guy.
I also think your point, Commissioner Jones, about tying it in with um like the whole marketing thing and connecting with potential people who need access to funding for grants for their projects, like and making them aware of a grant program that we have, like using that as an opportunity. And I like your point about patting the back of Oregon City government and like giving them their fifteen minutes so that they can feel good about the project that we're doing. So I think um.
I mean, the fundraiser or the Apple Fest, Apple sculptures they did, they had three nonprofits. But that's where the proceeds went, the money that they made to the art center, to um food bank and to, I think, United Fund.
And I agree with Commissioner Carlson too, that we can decide how that money is allocated for the funding that is raised. And maybe a portion of it goes back into grants or goes back into um the feasibility study or the, you know, future work.
So we have ten minutes of the work section left. And I just want to make sure that as we go into our meeting in two weeks, uh, that there's enough direction from each of you guys to say that you have something to actually put a motion to and and do. So I would probably use this last ten minutes to help sort that last bit.
Can I go and ask one quick question? I don't know if we'll know the answer. Maybe we do. What? I I feel like having us raise money that is essentially city money and then turning around and donating that city money to a nonprofit, is that something that's, I I don't know, is that even allowed?
And that wasn't my suggestion. I was just giving it as an example.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I did that. I'm just, I'm not sure.
There's some logistics issues that we would probably solve on the, you know, as we flush out the whole program. We would have to make sure to get, you know, Commissioner Plankton's right, that, you know, legal, legal will have to have some kind of review on it.
Yeah, because we're, I mean, we'd be donating city money.
If we didn't put back in the grant program, we could do it that way. Now I think smooth things out a little bit more.
I would think any money's made would go back to the art fish and do that, disperse it through funds, to do um have a sustainable funding to do other event projects. So I don't really see sharing it as much as sharing it with the community.
From Dan, I I don't think that anyone here, like, at this point in the meeting, I I don't feel like, I mean, I feel like everybody's had a pretty good voice. I'm not sure that like we as a group are gonna vote on something that we don't have the information for. But I think that we seem to be in agreement that there's some ideas that we'd like to write projects for. And so I'm not sure exactly what we're supposed to do as a body that we haven't already done. We, I, it feels like we've already listened to each other pretty well and, you know. I mean, it's gonna take individuals on their own, basically, though, writing something up that we can vote on as a body. Kind of like the way Tris has done, I mean, like the way Tris did the work for, you know, the murals that we voted on. I mean, I think that if Commissioner Wilson has the ideas that, uh, you know, about grants and has a specific idea for how to do that, Commissioner Wilson might need to write up a proposal. Or if you have this idea about the trout, that you might need to come to us with more information. Like, we were asking about how much is it gonna cost, you know, um, what would it do? I think we would need something more, more information to be able to vote on that. Because that seems like something that I've heard people say, you know, if you wanted to do the wallpapering vans, you might need a proposal. Something like, how much is it gonna cost? What's it gonna look like? But but I think that we're gonna have to do some homework on, oh, and the way that you did and the way that you did. I mean, I think this is a great, and and bring it, bring it to a meeting.
Thank you.
And we would need to get any information to you seven days in advance of the next meeting.
A week from today.
A week from today. All right, but I'll try everything I can to.
I mean, I think for the next meeting, even if we had this list plus the additional things that you wrote down and said, be able to say, these are our priorities. And everybody nods like, okay, this is, this is the box we're working in. Right? And then it's like, it will not, it will take another point in time to be able to to start to um balance out how that forty thousand will end up being spent. Um, in the sense of, I think we'll have that additional information about costs and whatnot, but um I'm not sure that everybody is at the place where they could, you know, take that forty thousand and allocate it to the buckets. But we could get to the place, I feel like I've heard here, that we're all like, okay, these are all important things. Uh, and so let's continue to keep our conversation within these things instead of.
But Commissioner, uh, what if somebody came to the meeting in two weeks with a really good proposal? Uh, here's how much it's gonna cost to do this salmon project. I've done the research. I've talked to these people. Here's the details, you know, would you like to move forward with this to the city commission? Or what if somebody came to the meeting in two weeks and said, oh, here, I've got a great idea for how we can do a grants project? And here is my paper that has three pages worth of how how to go about it. And it's been vetted by the city. Could, could we vote on something like that in in two weeks or in in six weeks if somebody's actually done the work?
My concern is you would have to get it vetted by the city. I don't think you get it vetted by the city, because really, we don't have two weeks. We have a week, right? Because everything has to be seven days in advance. So you have a week to turn this around.
But again, I think we are really talking about the, we can have the the conversation about the high level part. I think we're, we're diving too deep into the, the, the details that we say that we have. Uh, again, Tammy Jo's concept of that we would be able to create buckets that would have these elements in it. And then you go into the detail in the next four weeks to say, okay, we've, we've, we've agreed or we haven't agreed. Remember, some people may not agree. Um, and then they would, then after that's done, then you start really getting into the detail element. Because I, again, Commissioner Lugo's bringing up a really good point that in the meantime, someone's putting together all the elements that are necessary and they, and you guys do adopt the the buckets, uh, the program, then you would say, oh, we adopted this. Now we can plug these things that were already all taken care of. And that kind of expands things. Is that, uh, uh, again.
Can we make that voting that general, which I would love to, is to have it as general as this is the bucket, vote on it twenty thousand. This is the bucket and then then we work it through, whether it's two or three of us in a group that attack a certain project or, you know. Um, I mean, I would love.
I would love that too.
Well, I would recommend it be two, these two items that are listed, the grants program and the art program. I think the feasibility study should be requested that the city cover that. I don't think the Arts Commission should be paying a quarter of its budget for that personally. Um, but I think fifteen and twenty five would be a good start.
Well, my question is why, I mean, I love all these points, these seven now with the research. Um, and I would be happy to say our funding is going to go into these somehow. But I don't see a point in in designating twenty percent for this and twenty percent for this if we don't have specific ideas. I mean, especially because the pace that we're going, it complicates things. If we say, okay, twenty thousand dollars to grants, and then we get a genius idea that would take more money, I feel like that's moving ourselves. So I don't know why we wouldn't just adopt the seven bullet points with the two different categories and say, as we get projects, we are going to assign them a budget. Because we've done the research about how much they'll cost.
I think it's because we have to get the budget set. I think there's an urgent.
There's no, no, there's another thing that says we have to have a budget.
We have.
We just have the fund.
Yeah, and we have to, we have to agree on our priorities and our transparency to be able to spend the money.
Right.
That's correct. I mean, I agree that having somebody get to grants is great. I think it would be great to have some type of feedback. Maybe Daniel could help get this far since the next week or so. But if we wanted to do a grant program, what are gonna be all of the challenges with the city that we were gonna maybe have to face? And if, and it might help us identify, okay, how much do we actually want to put in that bucket? Because if it's like, okay, this is gonna take us seven months to get out and we have to spend the money by the end of the fiscal year, we might only have three months to spend it. We might not think we have time to do twenty thousand dollars. Maybe it makes more sense to do ten. I think that's one point that I would like to get more information on is if we wanted to do a grant program from our, with our funds, what are the catches that we're gonna find ourselves in ahead of time? Before we get into actually doing it. I also think it'd be good to have some money, some idea about this first project that we've talked about, which seems, everyone seems to be kind of, um, you know, in favor of with the salmon. Get some figures around that, because that might, it might not tell us like, that's what we're gonna do, but it might give us an idea of, okay, this is really what these projects are gonna start costing us. And then we have a sense of, you know, we can maybe move forward with it, but we don't. But at least it gives us an idea of, you know, to do anything, you're talking twenty five thousand per project. And then, yeah, I think that gives us enough info to move forward. But I I do agree that the grants and the public arts, those are two main areas. We could focus on those. But it's just a matter of discerning the information to, you know, get to a point where we know what we can spend and make a difference with, right? You don't want to dedicate enough to one and then find out we can't really do anything with this based on.
Some unknown problem.
Unknown problem, yeah.
So it sounds like we have two schools of thoughts and we seem divided. And I think we just need to pick one. So there's the, set the budget and then do the projects and then do the projects and then set the budget. And let's just pick one. And I will be on board with whichever way we do that. Uh, but I feel like there's different people saying different things. And if we wanna do budgets for the individuals first and then set the bigger budget, we can do that. Or we can set the budget and then budget our projects according to the money limits that we've given ourselves, which is what I was talking about. Like, let's just pick one. And because I think there's benefits to either way.
Unfortunately, we can't make any kind of.
Well, I know. We can vote on that next time, but I'm, I'm, I'm just articulating where I think we're stuck. And I feel like that is where we are stuck.
So what you would do then is just bring a proposal to the next meeting?
Yes.
And ask us to vote on it.
And hopefully we can vote on these buckets as the structure, because I think we're all in agreement with us. That's where we want to go.
Yeah.
And it's obvious you have a lot of passion for this. And I think, you know, you've already done some really great work, so I look forward to the next meeting.
I'm happy to put together proposals, because I feel like I'm in the one book, the one format type, and I'm happy to do that.
When you say proposal, what do you, what do you mean?
Like, here's how I would, you know, the, the project setup, we would identify one project, identify the cost for that and then identify the next project based on priority and then the cost for that and how we could, how this would all look. And then if you wanted to put together a proposal for, this is why it'd be better to just do two simple buckets.
I mean, I feel like I just already did that. I mean, that's kind of what this.
I, I mean, yeah, I, if we want to go right into the next meeting though and decide which way we're gonna go with this, then I would say it would be best to have some type of, okay, here's option one, here's option two, and then have people decide on that, right? So that's why I was saying a proposal or that outline of what the options are, but. That's why I also think it would be better to have some numbers and some information from Daniel on the grant stuff, because that might decide how we end up wanting to do this, if we want to split it out evenly or if we want to go more of a priority list.
Yeah.
So if I were to agendize this, we should, I mean, I, I mean, but this is, if we, it's kind of the order that will help kind of define this. That uh, that Commissioner Andrews could put on a small presentation of as this item. Then the second one would be to cover my staff report that you just requested about any uh complications that may come from a grant program.
Home challenges.
Yeah, thank you. Challenges. I like that better. And then, then move on to that third stage, because we kind of need some headline. Does that sound like everyone?
So, wait, so. I got lost somewhere.
Josh's concern is, is that he needs some answers before he can make a decision.
Right, yeah, no, I got that. I got that. So challenges to grants. Uh, we were talking about trying to put together a short little like proposal of like the the salmon project, like a guesstimate. With the numbers, knowing that they're gonna cost more and then a a basic outline of grants program. I think, right, is that in my, for next week? And then we look at the, on the agenda, we look at those things. And then hopefully we can vote on something.
Yeah, because if it comes back that that project is, again, is ten thousand dollars, I don't think I have any problem with saying, okay, just bucket it twenty thousand, twenty thousand. But if it's twenty five thousand, then it's like, okay, well, we can do this, even buckets, but do we want to do still, you know, go with a bucket route and then try and fundraise the the difference for the public arts project or what?
Well, to me, it's also like, do we really want to spend thirty thousand dollars on pitch? Like, there's more to it now.
Well.
How much is too much?
Yeah, but if you're also raising, say, forty thousand from selling those fish.
Still, how much money, to me, there's. Still, how much money, to me, there's a limit of how much money I want to spend on fish.
The, my, my concern isn't the, the cost, it's what's the ROI? What's the return on our investment here? What are we going to get back from the community for doing this? And what are we going to get back for future budget years for doing the projects? Well, that's my concern.
And I agree, if they could better fund grants more sustainably or something like that, that would be a real solid point. I was wondering, too, if on the agenda, would we first, um, suggest adopting?
Things to. But also, we had talked about getting community feedback about these things. So, like, what?
Yeah.
It's not just our choice.
Yes.
But what would people support? Because we can theorize about what people would support, but we could also call people to ask what they would prioritize.
I mean, the things that, again, in so many community organizations over the last three, four years, this is what comes up over and over and over again, is the sculptures around town and an art community center. That, that's from the community, that's what they ask all the time to the art, is the art commission going to have an art, are they going to have an art culture? So, I mean, that's just the community voice, um, and talked for so many different organizations, is let's do the town project.
Commissioner Andrews, I'd like to request that you close the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. It is the time.
Yes, it is, right on time.
Okay. Meeting has ended. Can I just say, I want to just say, I just want to tie it up, I'll be working on numbers that I can bring to the next meeting.
I will try and work on grant things.
To the agenda, and then we'll have some, something tangible to work on.
And I will be in Utah.
You can be, you can work on being in Utah.
But, um, I'll work up, I'll, I'll touch base with you the next week.
Yes, we'll email and text and back and forth, because I've got a lot of it just at home. All right, meeting is, what is it?
Adjourned.
Ended, adjourned.